Okay, welcome everybody to Committee of the Hall. It is Thursday, May twenty-third at five thirty.
Three.
Three P M. And, uh, Annie, what'd you call the role?
Uh, cop.
President.
Ash.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Metris.
Here.
Larson, here, Kuda.
Here.
Russell.
She's at a conference. So, we have with us today Rhonda Davis Lojo, who is the Chair of the Racial Justice Task Force. And that's our topic today. So, just to kind of recap, uh, because it's been a while. George Floyd was brutally murdered in two thousand and twenty. In two thousand and twenty-one, a racial justice task force was appointed by city council. And they started their work with the charge of kind of looking into our practices and making sure that, you know, there weren't things we could do in the city, um, to bring, uh, D E I to Cleveland Heights. And, uh, social justice certainly. A presentation was made on, uh, the recommendations from the racial justice task force in July of two thousand and twenty-three. And I, I want to apologize to you because I'm so sorry this took so long. I know that this year we had some scheduling problems, but, you know, we're here today, so let's, you know, just get on with it. So, what we're here today is talk about what we can do to implement.
Yes.
The, the recommendations and to, you know, prioritize, you know, because you can't do everything all at once, we all know that.
Right.
And so, I thought it would be helpful if Rhonda, you could, um, just kind of run through, you know, the basics of where we're at, just to refresh everybody and myself included, and hopefully people watching.
Well, you guys all know these tremendous people that were in place at time to kind of help do this work, so that was great, right?
Yep.
And, um, I think this beautiful person back here in the corner, um, was a part of the housing committee then. And, um, he'll contribute to all this research and so forth. And one, one thing I wanted to say at the beginning too is that, um, every organization that we ended up working with did an excellent job just in being available and making sure that we got the information that we need, so it was really, really helpful. We kind of selected, you know, there was, well, you already know that we kind of broke down into subcategories, you know, housing, economic mobility, then we did education, then we did public safety. So, those categories really helped guide the work. And by us doing it that way, um, people that were actually selected to be a part of the task force itself got a chance to work in the areas of their interest. So, nobody was like really doing anything that they didn't have the expertise for or didn't have the interest for, so that was very helpful. So, this is, um, you know, like the steps that we had kind of put in order, in order to just really have some uniform, like, just looking straight out at the information because there's so many recommendations, but this kind of really, um, pulled everything together in terms of what the actual challenge was and, and, and the, all of the tasks. So, the bit that you see, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, yeah, four bullets down, partnering with the local library and the school system to sponsor reading materials where adult residents and youth can review and study information about racial issues and become more aware of, of proposed remedies. That was a really great recommendation because, um, it involved all of the city residents. It involved youth, it involved teens, it involved everyone who could possibly learn more about, um, racial disparities, right? So, it would open up the door for us to have conversations with one another and let the library take the lead because, you know, they often do lots of conversations too. And Future Heights is another one that does the crowdsourcing conversations, right? So, we've got all these entities in our neighborhood that will allow for a platform for us to come together and actually, you know, have those open discussions. So, we're gonna go through all of the slides, but I did want to, um, just kind of highlight some of the things that I felt like first would be easy, like the city really had the capacity to do. Because when we involve, um, partners or another other nonprofit organizations, it takes some of the pressure off of council, takes some of the pressure off administration because we're just saying, okay, who in the community at large has some expertise that they can lend to, you know, making this happen? And then, of course, by involving the community, it helps them to, um, learn about the side of issues that maybe they weren't quite familiar with. As a matter of fact, um, I think it was mentioned, um, today, we were over at Coventry Peace Park and, um, you know, talking about the, um, you know, what that's gonna look like for the organizations there. But one of the things that, um, I had a conversation with Lake Erie Inc., and they were actually sponsoring some type of writing, um, activity that would involve students learning more about, um, James Baldwin, right? So, you know, like, who doesn't want to know about James Baldwin? If we haven't read his books yet, then we want to know more information. But, you know, these organizations are some already doing some things, you know, that are really, you know, captivating audiences and teaching and educating and so forth, so it makes it really good, so I like that. The next bullet point is, um, basically talking about collabor- collaborating with the other organizations in, in the community that actually sponsor diversity training. So, at one time, I think we had Kahoots, um, doing some dur- uh, diversity training, we had Groundwater, some other organizations that were offering free training and people, like fifty or sixty people could sign up at one time just to be involved. And so, after that, um, after participating or locating those organizations that can really, um, help shed a light on what it is we're trying to accomplish, it would be the perfect time for us to kind of plan some, some backtalk, right? So, have some conversations and, and bring everybody together just to talk about what they learned and so forth, so, yeah. So, we can actually go to the next slide.
President Kuda.
Oh, questions?
Before we do that.
Yes.
To implement these recommendations, would you expect to have a smaller number of people actually still working on the racial justice task force?
Yes, absolutely, because the one thing that we wanted to ensure was that, um, council members have resources and, and community residents, right? So, that we're not saying, okay, here, this is your job, take it, run with it, decide how. You know, we wanted to kind of make one of the recommendations too, and I think that will come up in another slide, have the recommendation to have a task force or a committee, whatever council in the city feels like it wants it to be, but at least continue on with this work, right? Needs to be something, so I'm glad you brought that up too, that was real important, yeah, yeah. Thank you for that, definitely, definitely keep it going and then be a resource to council. Yep, yep, yep. So, providing funding for the racial justice task force actually is the point that Gail was making. We know that some organizations, and this is the last bullet. I know the city of Cleveland, um, they started racial justice task force and they actually used our topics. About that, don't even, don't need to reinvent the wheel, but, um, you know, they did get some funding from the city in order to, to get things done and do their research. For us, you know, it didn't seem to be costly for us, right? It didn't really, um, I didn't see the need at the time for us to have any funding because everybody was pretty much engaged in just the, um, kind of activating the relationships they already have with other organizations and bringing those forward, so it really didn't. Some of the activities in the community may have cost, you know, a hundred dollars or so for it, but we could certainly figure out, like, budgeting-wise, if there was something that would actually cost, um, money that we would apply to it, I, I don't know what that would be, and that's why we didn't really stick that in there in terms of specifics.
Questions?
Yeah.
Everybody? Yes, sir.
So, I mean, Lisa Hunt was really engaged in this process.
Yes, yes.
And, you know, I had never spoken to her about, and, and I was formerly on the school board for a long time. We passed the racial equity policy, which was one of the best things we ever did. We had a lot of difficulty getting that thing, uh, off the ground. But it is working really great right now. And our first few meetings, we actually had city officials. When we did some groundwater training, and I think we had R E I, uh, in, in the house doing the presentations for us. I think pretty much every director from the city was asked to go, we had police officers, it was really a remarkable turnout.
Yes.
The school district is doing it, and it would be great if there was some way we were able to find a way for the city just to snap into it. And you're talking about low-hanging fruit, which is like, I suppose, some of the easy things. I mean, are, are we talking about, I guess, what is the expectation for this meeting? Are we gonna, are, is, is the intent to really figure some of these things out? Or carve working groups together, or just get a better sense holistically on what was presented and then meet later and figure out a way to carve it out or put it into our community?
Like I said, we're, you know, we're, let's, let's look at the presentation and then have a discussion about what we can implement, and some of it's legislative. I mean, some of it's potentially legislative and, and some of it is, um, you know, administrative practices and so forth.
Okay, I'll hold off.
Yeah.
Let's, I, I'll hold off saying anything other about this until.
Those are good points, especially from the school's perspective, because they are doing a lot of great work.
It's great that there's a model in it too.
And it's potentially a budget item?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah, so that's a good point.
My control answer, you are, okay. Great, great, great. Economic opportunity recommendations. So, this one was interesting, let me see, what I feel like is one of the, just for the sake of time, is one that's really, really, in terms of how we, um, got into our discussions. But of course, the funny thing about, um, economic opportunity, we had like a couple of, uh, perspectives that we were trying to approach, right? So, what this really means is it's really a focus on businesses, right? In the community that we feel are not a part of a C I D, they don't have an existing, like, merchant association, they, they're not organized in specific districts. So, Noble Road and of course South Taylor were two of those that we kind of highlighted as in need of some support as it relates to just being organized. Now, we understand that, you know, to have a C I D in the community means we have to go, you know, have to have the owners of the establishments or the facilities or so forth buy into that concept, be willing to invest in it and then go through the city to have a process, but, um, in order to, to get to where they need to be. But thinking about a merchants association or just another way that we could actually organize those businesses, just to see what type of support that they need in order to be, to maintain the success level that they have, and then of course, to increase their capacity to, you know, serve a wider, um, wider audience in the community. So, basically, um, that's where that work came from. So, some of this, and I'm gonna ask Gary too, because this was a part of Gary Benjamin's, um, committee, to kind of chime in on some of those areas that we felt like we definitely wanted the city to know. So, which point would you say kind of stands out in your mind? That community reinvestment coalition was like really something really important to me and to others.
Those two are long-term, but the idea is to try to get banks to invest more in our city, our low and middle income neighborhood, mortgages and home repair loans and the like. So, to do that, you need someone to analyze your, what they call H U M D A data, Home Mortgage Disclosure Act data, and that comes out every year and is available by August for the prior year. We've done that, I shouldn't say we, the G C R C group, Greater Cleveland River Investment Coalition, does that every year through Frank Ford, who appeared before us. So, those two things are important, having an expert do that. Cleveland Heights is not broken out in the census. Our thirteen census just, or, um, census tracts are, you have to add them up and do, do the.
What did we say about this?
Work for you.
Yeah. What did we say about this census tract, like, what was our approach? Did we, did we address that at all, or we were just?
Yeah, somewhat, I, I did some research from the housing report that the city did in two thousand and twenty, the HUD. And there were thirteen, I think there was thirteen tracts, or eight are identifiably white and five are identifiably black, majority one or the other. We did some work with the numbers with those. The number of, 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 uh, single-family houses that were rentals and the, the black areas were triple what they were in the white areas. Homeownership was very different too. The other piece of this, I think comes up in a later slide, is that, uh, Cheryl Stevens had a committee of the county that, that I was on, the mayor was on, Barbara Anderson from here and a bunch of other people who knew housing. And the county is gonna try to use its finances, which is a billion dollars a year pretty much, for a four-year period with banks.
Yes.
To, to push, uh, banks, in- incent the banks, is the word we were using, uh, to get money into low and middle income neighborhoods, because particularly Key Bank is bad at that. So, um, that's probably gonna come up with this next county.
We talked about, um, yeah, Gary, didn't we talk about, um, the money that some local banks have received specifically to reinvest in certain communities that we felt, um, were among that racially divided? You know what I'm saying?
That is supposed to.
Was during Obama's years? Anthony? Was that it?
There was community reinvestment funds, um, given out to banks, and then there were other banks that internally allocated funds. Key Bank was one of those banks that committed specifically to two different sites.
Right.
Uh, the northeast Ohio Cleveland area and Buffalo, New York, where First Niagara was centered when they purchased that.
Right.
That merger. So, I was gonna state though along those lines is that the, the issue with the financing with the banks, there, there's, there's a, a couple of things that I know came up, and I've, I've had that conversation with, with several people on task force about is, the funding is there. It's unfortunate though, because a bank as a financial institution doesn't have strategy or any ideas in terms of community reinvestment or impact. And so, it, it, the best thing that many communities can do, and this is something that I've, I've pushed for several municipalities, not just Cleveland, i- is to really bring and approach these financial institutions with programming ideas. Because they're not gonna spring them up, they'll throw money at things hoping that it works, but they really need that expert data. And so, something that I'm pressing a lot of communities to do is say, hey, bring them something that they can feed into. And you'll typically see a, a, a larger impact in those areas than if you were expecting the bank to create those programs. The, in, uh, to give you an example, uh, one, two. I know I just saw it, I'm sorry, but when we're talking about homeownership in terms of the African-American community, one of the struggles with the banks, and Key Bank is by far one of the most conservative banks in the country, so if, even if I remove them and use some of our, our, even our credit unions across the country, you're gonna see that one of the stifling issues is they, they have a strong desire to lend.
Right.
What there isn't is a strong, um, pipeline of people who are qualified.
Right.
And that's one of the things that I was talking to City Cleveland Heights about, we were talking about over the last couple of years, in, in planning and developments, number one, a merchant association that doesn't just fund, um, into businesses, but also helps to educate, because many of the business in these, uh, communities don't have the qualifying paperwork to even get approved for a loan. And so, it really starts from many of the basic things, and so, one of the things I want to look at is the city not only starting a lending program, a really discuss it, but really an educational program for people of color to really try to purchase those homes at their end.
Right.
Because if, if Key Bank was to dedicate five hundred million dollars just to the City of Cleveland Heights homeownership, but those people don't qualify, you still wouldn't see any impact. And so, the issue is how do cities help qualify their residents to be able to get into those programs? And that's something that many cities have skipped over.
Right.
And so, the banks have been frustrated, because what we don't want to say is that the African-American community not only is, is our homeownership below everyone else, but one of the reasons is because our income and our credit is as well. So, there's multiple reasons why that impact is happening, but if we don't address that, no matter how much financing these banks provide, it won't happen. And that's why in many cases, Key Bank was not successful in approving those loans. They're already a very conservative bank going into an African-American community where there are multiple barriers to getting a loan approved. And so, one of the things I think for Cleveland Heights to do is address, is that educational proponent, is making sure that if we're going to feed into some programming, i- it goes into making sure that the people of color in the community, many of them are helping to get prepared for that, so that when you lean in on those financial institutions, you have people that are prepared.
Right.
And the educational proponent in that preparation for those loans is something that's missing across the county.
So, would you think then collaborating, you know, selecting a couple of banks, um, for the city to collaborate with, creating these programs, you know, from A to Z, the step-by-step homeownership, you know, and then finding, have people apply to be a part of that program?
What you're seeing is some major cities have told banks and said, hey, I, I know you want to lend the money and you can't, so I don't want another bank in the city's crazy that sounds, could you put one of your educational learning centers in instead? And that's why you're starting to see those pop up in many of our communities, and there's a couple here that banks have done.
Right.
Where it's, it's more than just banking, it's really, they can drive to Severance, they can drive to, to Coventry and go in there and take those classes.
Yeah.
And at the end, they have that pipeline of approvals for folks who are already living in the city. So, I would impress for cities and, and organizations to partner in bringing those education centers in, because the, the banks have already invested financing into those. They're gonna help people open up bank accounts and walk them through that entire process of credit improvement to paperwork, and not you have someone right in the city. It's very difficult, because right now, if you want to do that, you gotta drive into City Cleveland right now. There isn't anyone close around where you could drive as a resident of Cleveland Heights to get that kind of partnership.
Nice.
We could partner with H R R C for a lot of that, because they already have housing counselors for mortgages.
And that's precisely what at one point we talked about, using ARPA funds, is to fund the H R C and those type of programs, not just, um, the, the supplies and the loans, but that educational proportion. That's one of the things that we, we initially spoke about.
Now, did you find, in, when you were doing this work, there were banks that didn't let a loan to African-Americans or anyone that, that if the loan was for less than a hundred thousand dollars? Because I did see that Frank Ford talked about that at one of the V A P A C meetings, and it was like a shock to me that I, I didn't realize that there were a lot of banks that didn't, if it was less than a hundred thousand dollars, they.
They won't make any money off of it.
Well, yeah, I guess that was, yeah. I, I don't know, and it, you know, obviously that, um, if you're looking at demographics.
Yes.
That's gonna disproportionately affect.
Right.
Um, African-Americans. Now, I know we don't have a lot of houses anymore that are less than a hundred thousand, but I, I guess we have some, I don't know.
And even when you hit one twenty or one forty, you're on the bubble in a way. Frank's research is really clear.
That's true.
And that they just don't know that they can help it at a hundred thousand or below. Used to, five years ago, it was fifty thousand or below.
Extreme amount of risk at that point, and a lot of upside.
Especially, they make pretty much the same amount of money off a home.
So, did you look for banks that, that do it, or, you know?
Well, I, through other.
Sources.
Connections, I have, and I, I'm pretty much Frank, he, he follows six banks.
Right.
And they're all banks that have community reinvestment agreements, and, um, none of them, Huntington was the best.
So, that would be a good part of the educational piece, because a lot of people don't know where to look, right?
Well, that's why we need a, a expert like Frank to look at our city and see. For instance, the G C C group, we did some work, um, mostly Diana Woodbury did it. But we discovered that the most foreclosures in town were U S bank, by far the most. And I think that's our bank for the city.
It is too.
Really?
Yeah.
They have a lot of work.
You know, they, they kind of straightened their act out under pressure from us, but that was kind of a surprise to all of us, that they were, probably shouldn't have been, there's a big branch in the main grocery store, so.
Historically, it was the way they went about those in the communities that they were in, in their initial setup, like they were in those grocery stores.
Let me just say something at this point. I'm, I'm looking at the clock, and I know we have to be in another meeting at six-thirty.
Yes.
So, what I wanted to make sure is that, um, we go through enough of the recommendations that we can start talking about, uh, implementation too, I'm sorry about that part.
That's okay, because housing would be like very important to us, right? And so, um, Gary and Ben certainly could share out and we can.
Why don't we do this, since we've kind of given this a good going over? Why don't we give the housing one a good going over?
Okay.
And then, we can make this a committee, implement implementation, a committee of the whole topic.
Okay.
Um, but at least get through.
Yes.
You know, so, so at least our, our council has seen two of the bigger topics.
Okay.
And, and I, I know safety, I know there's more.
Yeah.
And we'll just, we'll just plan another meeting for that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Right.
But housing is critical for us, right?
By all means.
Yes, um, let's see, health and education, we'll skip, some of that, um, Jim, is the health and education piece is some of what you mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
But just, um, you know, really in on the education side, just strengthening a, a relationship with the school district and really, um, you know, chiming into, um, what the, um, the school district has to offer in terms of our relationships with youth. Um, and just seeing more activity around youth and more activity around helping youth understand identity, especially as it relates to youth that have been through some offenses, right? We need to kind of pull them in and rein them in and show them some love and so forth, but we can always do that through education, so that's one thing. The health piece, um, real quickly, is to kind of focusing on the collaboration with the police department during our nine-one-one calls and sending out a mental health specialist, you know, as it relates to, um, really kind of discerning between what kind of call is this, you know, what kind of mercy call. But, um, in a meeting that we had with Metro during this research, um, our committee head, um, Robert, had the Shaker Heights Police Captain there, and I think the Fire Department, and they talked about their relationship and collaboration that they have in Shaker, and they're doing tremendous work as it relates to responding to those nine-one-one calls, and really, you know, having someone at the dispatch actually say and identify whether this is something where police need to just totally be on the scene or if mental health specialists, social workers last.
Oh, Rhonda, good news?
Yes.
Monday, the mayor announced a partnership with such an or- a social organization, so we actually do have that in place.
Yes, great, great, great.
Can, can I say something real, real quick? This is extremely relevant, I, I believe. So, uh, we have a, a meeting on the third, is it the meeting? And, uh, I talked to President Kuda, um, and Annie about adding an agenda item, the council meeting of the whole, to go over, uh, what I think, kind of, would have a discussion on what the council priorities should be for the safety and health committee that, um, I'm a part of, Gail's a part, and Craig is a part of. And this, this sort of wicks right into that, um, because there's, there's things I'd really like that committee to be focused on. I'd like, hopefully, all of us in agreement of, hey, look, this is what it's gonna, the, these are the, these are the hotspots. And, you know, this is, I think, initially good guidance for two of those things, the public safety piece and, and obviously the health piece. And we'll just whip the education piece into that too. Uh, so maybe if we can keep in mind, um, what you folks would like to see to be part of a, a focused effort that this council wants to have as a priority, and think about measurements on what it would be important, I mean, if we did the work and if we found someone, because we don't necessarily do the work, but who, who would be doing the work? And how can we measure the success of that?
That sounds right, that sounds great, and I think Metro had a lot to add, you know, in terms of the resources of, you know, the system itself that we could just plug ourselves into and, and come out, um, with not an overabundance of work or not stretching out the capacity to, to, to implement a system like that, but actually just, um, again, tapping into the existing resources that we already have so that, um, we can move it all forward. Very good, so health, there's more of that, more of that, education, education partners, housing accountability, blah, 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 blah. To the first bullet point, Gary, um, this was specifically talking about, um, again, focusing, focusing on the relationships of, between landlords and tenants, of course, but looking at tenants' rights and, and being a support to them, whether it's through the porch or whatever. And, um, I'll let Gary and Ben kind of expand on that. Those, whichever three of those bullets you feel like is the most important, I don't know.
Pay to stay.
Pay to stay.
One thing that's already been done.
Right, it's scratching off the list.
We had two tenants on the committee initially and two young people who had been tenants within the last year, just bought a house in the city, on the committee, and Reggie and Menonah. Reggie sent his regrets, he just texted me, he just got out of work. But one of the things they all said, the people who had been tenants, was that the eviction process is awful. And if you get evicted, it's a black mark on your record, pretty much for years to come. And we knew that the city of Cleveland had been one of the few places in the country where every tenant who's in the eviction process has the right to counsel, and is provided for free. So, we, uh, that's one of our recommendations. How we do that. How we do that can be the volunteer attorneys, it costs next to nothing. Or you can do the way the city did, the city of Cleveland did, which was they got a grant and they put aside a certain amount of money to pay legal aid to show up at housing court. They they have a lot more evictions than we do. We met with the judge, they have, it's ten to fourteen a week. These are all Tuesday morning or Monday morning.
Tuesday, I think.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
They're Tuesday?
Thank you.
So it it takes a couple of hours and most of them, they work out agreements and walk walk away, so. But there are those that, you know, like when pay to stay was in, was in, is still in place. But when with pay to stay and with uh anti-discrimination legislation on source of income, those two things, legal aid has been using in our court to protect people from being evicted. So that'd be a big one. The business owners' piece.
It's great.
One thing before you went, oh, I'm sorry, you got a question?
Yes. So for clarification, so am I hearing that legal aid does help some number of people who are going through evictions here in Cleveland Heights? But it's like legal aid's discretion, I guess, based on who reaches out to them and, you know, whether they have the capacity to help folks? Okay.
It is, and I was, I was formerly one of the major administrators of the eight county legal aid that's based in Akron. And I don't know that we took one out of ten, maybe one out of five evictions that came forward. And it tended to be families with kids. A lot of single moms that had kids, we would represent. But and we tended to take cases that we thought we could actually do some good on. Sort of subjective, because really you can do some good on all those cases by working on a deal, which is what Judge Costello preser prefers anyway. So uh having universal representation would help. I did some of this myself when I was there. I forget what county I was. One of our eight counties, Portage, I guess it was. The other piece of this for legal aid that's tricky is some people being evicted are not eligible for legal aid. They they, rich people get evicted too, so.
Right.
And and they actually could hire their own attorney, but if you're gonna put in there universal, it's universal, but if legal aid's actually doing it, they're not. Well, we could keep doing an eviction case for someone that had income that was too high, was just messing around with their rent or something.
One other question. So do we have a sense of how many of those cases legal aid is helping with today? And like what portion would be eligible? So is it the case that of those ten to fourteen, legal aid is helping with ten percent of them? But fifty of, but fifty percent of them would be eligible under, you know.
I remember what the judge's email said and what he told us when he met with us. They I they don't take more than two cases a week, maybe less, and there's twelve to fourteen. And some of that is their resources of limitation. They don't have the resource to have somebody there all day to take, you know, a dozen cases. That's different than taking two.
Hey, Jim, can you remind me of, uh, sorry, Petrus? Can you remind me um your rights and responsibilities idea? And if that applies to what we're talking about here?
Yeah, so um being a tenant, um, I feel that it's important that we help make tenants aware of their rights and responsibilities. I, for example, learned only uh at over the last year that you could put your rent into escrow with the court. And I think that it's important that people know that information. So I had a number of different conversations with people. And a number of people recommended that I talk with legal aid to draft up those Cleveland Heights specific rights and responsibilities. So they are working on that now and a draft will be ready to share with the housing committee at its meeting on the fourteenth, I think.
Okay. And and how are you planning on distributing that, like or? Or I mean.
Like, in, would we require that it be?
Oh, I see.
I'm sorry, is that what you're asking?
So it would be a legislative piece.
Yeah.
Where uh.
And there are a couple different ways that it could get out there.
Yeah.
Um, and that um I think is where Director Hannah could be really helpful in providing guidance. So legal aid is compiling the rights and responsibilities of tenants. And then Director Hannah will talk with us about different ways that we could potentially either require that landlords, you know, just generally provide it or maybe include it as a part of a lease. There are a number of different options there.
So does, you you know, given that obviously, you know, bullet point number one, I mean, you don't really, I mean, nobody wants that to happen.
Right.
Uh, you know, where you need a lawyer, but um that could be part of, you know, maybe.
I think that's on another slide. We have to have a discussion to do.
Okay, okay, sorry, dude.
But it fits really well. I mean, and that was one of the first things the tenants said, we didn't know our rights. And one of them was a really smart guy and was having trouble with the landlord during the the meeting. So I was advising him what to do and he did escrow and all that. The escrow thing works, so if you, not everybody understands it, it's, if the house is in really bad shape, you can go to the court. After you tell the landlord thirty days in advance, preferably in writing, and you can put your rent into the court and the landlord doesn't get the rent until the case is resolved, one way or another.
Repairs are made.
The city used to do education work here that um Susannah, when she ran the community outreach department or whatever.
Community relations.
Yeah, they did landlord tenant training once or twice. And DeVita's been doing that with the judge. It's been, those have been very local. In fact, one of the pieces we asked for, longer term recommendations, what I call a bad landlord thing. It came out of one of DeVita's meetings, cause the tenants started raising heck. I know Tony and Gail and Mallory were all in court. I don't, I think that was the three of you. And uh, so we drafted something we think would work that would be heavier handed than what the judge has the right to do to the bad landlords now. And would get beyond the, some of the issues that LLCs create. So that if you have a building that's, you know, five Main Street LLC, and there's six Main Street LLC and they're owned by the same person, they're both terrible, you can lump them together and and increase the fines and penalties to the landlord who has two buildings that are really bad instead of just one.
Makes sense.
That's a theory anyway.
I thought one of the really important things that came out of regi, the long-term recommendations from your committee was to adopt a registry for landlords. Because if you're a tenant who needs to find a new place to live, knowing how many escrow cases, for instance, have been filed against that landlord with the explanation as to why, you're not gonna rent from somebody who doesn't provide heat in his buildings or water. So um I just think that was a really important recommendation you all made.
Well, I liked that one too. That came from one of the tenants.
Yeah.
And there is a registry now. Landlords are supposed to register as landlords and they, some of them avoid it by keeping the water in their name so you don't know that they're, that it's a rental. So that, but that would be very, it was had how many escrow cases, but also how many evictions are filed by the landlord? How many um.
Code violation.
Security deposit claims there are. I I was a magistrate for twenty months or twenty-two months and I had those cases. And we had frequent flyers.
Wow.
Landlords that regularly didn't return security deposits and forced the tenant to come back. That if you're on a registry and tenant sees that, they'll say, well, why would I give this guy a security deposit? Not get it back anyway.
Well, it helps for enforcement too. I mean, I mean, if you don't, and I hear that's a problem, cause there's apparently only one way of when it gets to JJ, I apparently there's only one item that they're able to.
One charge.
Yeah, one charge they're able to look at at a time. And and they don't even know who some of these people are.
That's part of the bad landlord thing, you can lump things together. The other thing we were suggesting was the civil option, which people have been talking about now for four or five years. Because, and I I haven't heard back what Bill thinks of my legal analysis yet. But if you're a civil case, there are rules that if if the court wants to order relief from the landlord, in a criminal case, it can only do it against the landlord that's in front of him. And if they remove the the property from one LLC to another, even if the same person owns it, they have to start the case over. The civil option, there are jointer rules that you could use for necessary relief. So if some other person or party is necessary to give the person the relief they need, especially if it's the same owner. I would think that the that the jointer would work and that the court could go ahead and not have to start all over. So that's something we, I'm waiting for Bill to weigh in on that and see what he thinks. But that civil option is something very few places around here have. The other reason we do it is if we have an elderly couple that owns their house and they have, you know, fixed income and the roof goes bad, well, they need money to fix the roof and they don't have the money. And they end up with a criminal record instead of a civil fine. One of the things that's been going now is a diversion program that works pretty well. And people get referred to H R R C and they get help doing the repairs they need. And then the case is dismissed and there's no criminal liability. And that that program has been going three, four years now.
Three.
Yeah. So uh.
Well, let me ask you a legal question. If if the civil option were implemented, because the standard is so much lower for guilt, would it be easier to, you know, have findings against people if there was a civil option? You know what I mean? Like since the, you don't have to meet this beyond the reasonable doubt kind of thing?
Yeah, I think that's possible, but it's usually these are, you know, you don't have water on.
Like slam dunk.
Yeah, they're mostly slam dunk cases. Or, you know, there's a picture of the hole in the roof. When I was in Detroit, gone organizing, we had a landlord that had a hole in the roof right over the bed for this older couple. I couldn't move their bed, cause it was a small house. And that guy never got fined or anything. We ended up picketing him to force him, picketing his business to get it done. So I don't know if there's more on there that's super important. Reggie had a great idea that I think if we could re, could do would be wonderful, um, and I think effective. But his idea was that a land, a tenant should be treated the same way as a property buyer.
Where is it down here?
Uh, it's in long term somewhere.
Okay.
Was it the first one?
A bad landlord?
It's the first one.
Uh, require landlords to disclose.
Oh, okay, disclosure.
Yeah.
The disclosure one, require landlords to disclose problems upfront, just like when you buy a house, the owner's supposed to tell you what the problems were upfront.
Right.
And you, with it landlord particularly, you could go look it up. If there's a registry, this could fit together with that pretty easily.
Yes.
And then have some kind of penalty in there. I mean, I was thinking if you treated it as a material part of the lease, that if if uh some issue came up with the lease and the landlord had violated it, that would be part of the lease at that point. It also says the landlord has to self-inspect and tell you what they found, more or less honestly. And if they don't, and they don't tell you what they found, and it turns out you move into a place that has a leaky roof, you're you're gonna uh, you're gonna be able to force the issue a little bit strongly, more strongly. Cause it'll be right in the lease that I've, this is accurate, and if it's not, not gonna look good.
Absolutely. Do we talk about a checklist? Cause landlords usually have a checklist that they use with renters.
Yeah, that's kinda what this is.
They have a checklist.
There are things that could go on that are uh even tougher though, because one, there was a point in history when foreclosure, tenants were protected from foreclosures of on their owner. So if the owner was foreclosed on and and the rent got paid to somebody that wasn't actually the owner at the time, they couldn't be evicted. That could go on these disclosure forms too, is the landlord up up to date on mortgages? Cause that can affect the tenancy.
Did did you ever guys ever get that streamlined a little bit? I remember being in a couple meetings.
No.
Okay.
I I streamlined it in a sense that I wrote up a proposed ordinance that just has the elements that should be on the form.
Yeah.
But the form itself, well, we copied the disclosure form that comes with the homeowner. It's lobby, like you list every system and the roof and the windows.
Maybe that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I actually have uh two things. So the, let's pick on this, on this disclosure. I mean, is there supplemental material beyond this PowerPoint that actually uh provide more detail?
Yeah.
Kids said, no, it's over.
It's it's not on the website, is it?
Is it, is it on our website?
I'll check.
I sent it to whoever's on the housing committee, the three of you.
They sent it before you were installed, so I could pass along what Gary just drafted.
That that'd be great.
We made that presentation to the housing committee last week.
Oh, so the, okay, so it's very timely then.
Yeah.
Um, stupid question, is Heights Community Congress still in existence or did they?
It just folded.
Yes.
That's one of our suggestions is to resurrect it.
Oh, that would be.
Yes.
Absolutely.
They wanted to collaborate with Future Heights early on, when they were first thinking that they were.
And with uh H R R C.
Well, I think they took over just the part of it, which is the home tour.
Yeah.
But then all of the other business, like the fair practice, fair housing practices and all that stuff, they were trying to collaborate with Future Heights. But we have a need for that organization in this community. We really do.
I worked there for three years.
And like there's just this presentation online, so I, if you send it to me, I can have Steve post it.
Okay.
It's, it's. Sent to Jim, Gail and Anthony.
Okay.
They're on the committee, I think Tony too.
Which committee? Sorry.
Housing.
Housing.
The draft of legislation.
Get my stuff on what I presented, yeah. So the three of you weren't, because you weren't in the loop, but I can.
Send that over, you can send it, you can find it really easy.
Thanks.
And then you know.
Yeah, I found it though, I made it out.
It's older with it.
Okay.
Stuff, yeah.
Just make sure all the caps are on.
I don't know, are we missing anything, Ben?
Nope.
Okay.
Don't think so.
There's a lot up there, so.
Yeah, um.
Oh, there it is, I I did think that.
Stronger commercial, we don't have a business inspection program.
Yeah.
Except through the Fire Department.
Well, we just hired uh.
Somebody to help do that, yeah.
Yeah.
On my commission.
Some of this.
Somebody to run it actually.
Yeah.
But that's, that's different though, isn't it? He's doing new construction.
I mean, I don't, I didn't see the job description, but.
This came out of a story that DeVita had, the business owner present to the National Democratic Convention two, three years ago, that her landlord wouldn't, wouldn't uh pump the water out of her basement where her business was. And it was making people sick, you know? And the landlord was saying, no, it's up to you, you, you sign, commercially says that, you know?
Yeah, thank you.
You're you're responsible. But we don't inspect them, except for fire hazards.
That's interesting.
So commercial building, we're not inspecting if it has a leaky roof?
It has a what?
A leaky roof.
I think that's true.
Say, no, check the fifth.
I think it requires there to be a um safety or health hazard to provide justification to enter the building. Otherwise, you need a search warrant.
Right.
Fourth Amendment.
And I I wanna, like, just to give you an example, um, even a church, we're, a building inspector might drive by, there's certain things that they would have. The only reason they enter that building is for fire. They're not looking for any other, any other things like that. So my roof, they might say something about my my gutters and things like that. And even, yeah, I've experienced that both in East Cleveland, Uglan and and uh East Cleveland.
Heights.
Yeah, Cleveland Heights and so it's just not someplace, it's not as robust as in other areas.
That's so interesting.
That's kinda similar to the curb, curb side inspections for owner occupied properties. Cause they can't, you can't go into it or, right?
You can't, mm mm.
Except for a point of sale.
That happened.
Now, if they go in and they, there's a structural issue, they absolutely, like if I'm missing a whole stairwell or something, like whatever they find when they walk in there for that inspection, they're gonna pull and they can call whoever they want to at that point. It's it's gonna bring danger for them. Typically, they're not just gonna do an interior full complete inspection that way. Typically, you'll see that some signs at least, if they're trying to get certain permits for a restaurant or something like that, you'll you'll see that because of the amount of volume of of city officials that have to come through to permit them. So they'll typically catch things then, but that that's. But that that's the only time you would you would see that.
So um as we're getting to the last few minutes here, um it seems to me that this. And please give me some advice here, um if we send it to the housing committee. And they could kind of like maybe discuss it, you know, make some prior, you know, prioritize, you know, some. Maybe recommend to the committee, the whole, you know, we we looked at this, we went into depth and, you know, talk about like. Uh what's doable and and so forth, um because there is more depth, I think. Uh needed in in the discussion and because we we're just kind of like, I feel like this is more like review.
Yeah, after um or when Gary and Melody shared their overview, um Director Zamb and Hannah. Um were there and so they've read through them, but I'm really interested in hearing from their perspective, you know, from their policy perspective, what they think, you know. Would be good, um and then, you know, include the mayor or anyone else who might want to also, you know, join. But yeah, that makes a lot of sense that maybe during our next meeting, we could, you know, maybe hear from the staff on some of their thoughts and, you know, start to prioritize some of those things. I know that one of the pieces, um and I shared this with Gary just the other day, that one of the pieces that they were suggesting was that. We um has an ordinance that would require like um that we inform people that they could be eligible for potential housing programs. And right now, I guess that we merely put like a phone number on the back of citations for the Home Repair Resource Center. But we don't really say like, hey, contact this number, you could be eligible for programs. And so um in talking with Director Zamb, um it sounds like that's something that they're um willing to do, just like within their office. Um so that's that's really good, but you know, maybe there are some other things that we might be able to do without legislation. Um but yeah, we could talk about it and start to like prioritize some of those things.
Uh it also suggested if anything comes up during those discussions that we have on committee, that our budget items, we can put something together for. Um the budget for twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, send me any ideas you guys have for budgets, by the way, I'm keeping track, so.
And then I the other, the 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 focus on economic development in the commercial districts. Um I I wrote down uh was was it the recommendation, I I just didn't get it. Did did were you saying that there should be resources put to organize a merchants association?
Mm-hmm.
Because I I it it sounded to me like you thought a CID was, you know.
So complicated, you know, and um so.
And it didn't also, it also sounded like a CID wouldn't get to some of the issues that the merchants have.
Right. Exactly, you know, um. You know, I there's a specific uh ordinance or code or something around how to organize. Uh a CID anyway, right? And some of the organizations in these two areas, we felt like didn't always meet the criteria.
Yeah.
But at the same time, they have a need to be organized and a need to be able to have access to resources that allow them to expand their business or. Yeah, you got a point about that?
No, just that's just, I don't know, there were two projects I was working on, planning and development, we finished. First was the ship container, second was the merchant association, so some of the cities already started working through it.
Good, good, good.
Part of that reason is because that CID would be, is have such a huge impact financially on those areas, you needed something looser.
Yes.
And that was one of the conversations that we we talked, uh Vice President Cobb, who was Vice President at the time, when we were having this conversation about the best way to go about that.
Right. Yes.
Um I I didn't know if that was gonna be revisited in planning and development, but that that conversation's kind of still sitting there in terms of some of the nuances between the two. But that's that, we had a whole year's worth of conversation about that already.
But one of the things, but one of the things that came out of when we were doing ARPA funds was.
That's so good.
Um Future Heights at that time was saying, hey, we'd like to work on, you know. Doing uh merchant association work and hiring somebody. And Brian Anderson said that the city was not interested in. Now, I I mean, I I don't think we're so much interested in this moment in who's gonna do it, but that it gets done.
Exactly.
And and then obviously, you know, how it gets done.
Yes.
The discussion, discussion was around supporting an entity, feeding into that. So what we came up with was talking about what, how much we would be willing to feed into the startup of that organization, get it off the ground. But it would always be its own entity, but making sure that they were empowered enough financially in those two particular areas.
Right.
To at least have the boost they needed to start through the ARPA funds and that's where we started with that.
Well, I I wanna I wanna finish that conversation and come up with a recommendation, you know. I mean, I think we should be looking at implementing this year, I don't think, you know, I don't, I mean, at least some priorities.
Yes.
And we won't get to everything and, you know, I don't expect to do it in Jul- in June, but but um. And then the banking investment stuff, maybe that could be in the finance committee and we could talk about. You you know, like.
Educational programs.
Right.
Collaborating with banks that would have, you know, offer those classes or whatever, where citizens could go, get trained, get educated. And then link up to actual home, first time home buying program that the bank certainly could facilitate.
So with like no minutes left, why don't we say this? Um Eddie, if you could send these notes out to us, um I'll make the. You know, public recommendation, not recommendations, uh uh you know, which committees go through the appointments and then. We'll, I'd like to come up with it, maybe we'll do this in committee of the hall, we'll come up with a timeline, you know, like what we're gonna be doing so that it doesn't get. To be like, I'm so sorry, yeah, something that just, you know, is is it goes into infinity.
Right.
Um so sorry to do this, but we do have another meeting at six thirty, Rhonda, thank you so much.
Got it.
And and Melody and Gary and I'm sorry.
Ben.
Ben.
Ben, Sperry.
Ben, I know, I know Ben, I just couldn't think of his name. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us, we appreciate it, thank you.
All right, and this this committee, the whole meeting is adjourned?